All right. Welcome to the. Hello. Hello. We're going to start the work session right now. So, welcome to the Twalton City Council Work Session, October 14th, 2024. We're going to start with a Water Management and Conservation Plan. And I bet that's Jake.
We're good.
Wonderful. All right. Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Jake Hush. I have been a Public Works Management Intern for this last summer. I am currently in my fourth year at Oregon State University studying environmental economics and policy. And through the course of my internship, my main research project was to look into what a water conservation plan would look like in the city of Twalton. A Water Management and Conservation Plan is an integrated resource management plan that describes the water system, its needs, identifies a source of water, and explains present and future management conservation practices. So why do we have this kind of plan? First of all, it is a requirement in our city's wholesale water contract with the Portland Water Bureau. It's also an identified item in our city's climate action plan, saying that we will look into creating a water conservation program. And the staff have recognized it is an identified council interest. There are five chapters in the Water Management and Conservation Plan. And the city of Twalton, through our wholesale contract, is only required to complete Chapter Three, the water conservation element. The other four chapters are managed by the Portland Water Bureau. The Water Management and Conservation Plan helps to establish a strategic framework for efficient and sustainable use of the city of Twalton's water resources. It also helps to guide the city efforts in reducing waste, enhancing efficiency, and looking for overall, long-term water sustainability in the city. Each section of the plan consists of a past and current water conservation measures. So what are we doing now? What actions does the city currently take? Along with a description known as a benchmark of what the city is looking to do in the next five years. The Chapter Three is split into two sections. One being the basic measures that is required from all cities that have a population over 1,000. And the enhanced measures, which is also required for the city of Twalton, is required for any city that serves over 7,500. Going into the basic requirements, we are required to do an annual water audit, which we do. This helps take a comparison of the water we take in from Portland and then the water we use as a city. This practice helps to identify leaks and water waste in our system. And our current benchmark for that is to continue to conduct these annual water audits. We're also in charge of doing system-wide metering. Twalton meets this requirement by metering all of our new and existing connections. Thus, our benchmark is to continue to have a fully metered system. We're also in charge of doing meter testing and maintenance. Through this, we get a monthly report from our meter-reading contractor that shows if there's any defective meters or any issues that can immediately be flagged. And then the City Water Division goes through and handles those repairs. We also, as a City Water Division, twice annually, calibrate any meters three inches or larger. And then our source meter is calibrated by Portland Water Bureau. We're also required to have a rate structure that bills customers based partly off of quantity of water used, and then go through and review these rates relatively regularly. Thus, the benchmark being to continue billing customers monthly, which is best practices in the state documentation, and then review the rates. We're also required to front a leak detection program, which we do. And this program helps to decide what our water loss is. The state standard is to be below 10%. Our current water loss is approximately 5.5%, meaning we exceed this. The public education aspect to the basic requirements, we do pretty well at. We promote water conservation through a variety of ways. This is education material through partner organizations like the Regional Water Providers Consortium and Backyard Habitat Certification Program, whom we've recently started a partnership with. And these education materials are typically distributed at either school events or at community events like National Night Out, for example. So those are all of the basic measures that we currently do as a city. And we currently meet all these requirements for our state documentation and our documentation going into the Portland Water Bureau. Now, Lindsay will be talking about the enhanced measures for the city of Twalton.
Thank you, Jake. I'm Lindsay Marshall, Public Works. So these enhanced measures, like Jake said, are required for 7,500 suppliers who supply water for 7,500 people or more. And the requirement for this is to explore the feasibility of the different types of enhanced measures. The enhanced measures can include, there's a guidebook that is put out by the state that gives examples of these different types of measures. And part of what Jake did over the summer is did extensive research on all of the different ways that the city could meet these enhanced benchmarks. And things to consider include cost. How will the community respond? What will the actual water savings be in comparison to like the cost to do the thing? So there's a lot of different things to weigh when you think about these enhanced measures. So Jake came up with a lot of these measures, a lot of options, brought it to staff. Staff went through and kind of talked about the feasibility of these and cost, staffing capacity, a variety of different things. And what we've come up with are proposed benchmarks that we'd like to include on the WMCP that we'll be submitting to the Portland Water Bureau. And these are five-year benchmarks. So every five years, we'll submit a new one. So over the next five years, we'll work on these proposed benchmarks and then either implement them or in our next report say why we decided not to implement them based on feasibility. So we'll come back and we'll do this again in five years when we are on our next set of benchmarks. The first benchmark are technical and financial assistance programs. And these are designed to aid commercial, industrial, and residential customers in implementation of conservation efforts. And the proposed benchmark that staff would like to set forward is essentially to set a community standard for water conservation education by using materials and assisting customers in that way. So this could be staff-created information, so kind of building up our water conservation webpage, so folks can access it at any time. Things like bill messaging inserts that we could put in a couple of times a year that have information on water conservation. Educational outreach and engagement, so if we're doing tabling events, National Night Out, like Jake mentioned, a variety of different ways like that. We could also continue to lean on our partners, like the Regional Water Providers Consortium, our Backyard Habitat Program that we're working with. They also supply great conservation educational materials. And they're also consistent throughout the region, which is helpful, you know, because we're in the metro region. And we'll also talk about conservation kits in a little bit. But these are all options that are included in that community education, something that staff feels we can accomplish feasibly in the next five years. The next enhanced measure, retrofit and replacement of inefficient fixtures. So in the past 20 years, we know that efficient fixtures have kind of skyrocketed. There's lots of different options. And one of the ways that suppliers can help reduce water use and conserve is to have fixtures that do that. And what we're proposing here is to implement a conservation kit to help customers replace and upgrade residential fixtures in particular. So these conservation kits are something that other folks around the region do. And Jake was able to price out wholesale with Portland Water Bureau. And these conservation kits would be available, like here, at Twalton City Services or City Offices, the library. And folks could come and pick them up, or we could send them to any new residential customers. They cost about 18 to 20 bucks a pop and include things like handheld shower nozzles, regular shower nozzles, hoses, as I'm trying, hoses, as you see. Aireators, let's see, toilet die tabs, those kind of things. So things to look for leaks as well as make little fixes. So it's a great customer service. They're really popular in a lot of the jurisdictions that they're available in. And that would be a great way to help our water customers retrofit and replace their residential fixtures. The next enhanced measure is rate and billing practices for conservation. So this measure is all about looking at rate structures, billing practices, and other things that can support water conservation. And our two benchmarks that we're proposing for this one are to conduct a study, looking at the potential of changing our rate structure to focus on more of a water conservation-based structure. One of them is tiered rates. So customers would be charged a uniform base fee and then charged based on their unit of consumption. So maybe zero to eight units, and then nine to 15 would be another, and then over 16 would be a different charge. So based on how much you use, you would be charged a different rate. Another option is seasonal rate. So your charges would be different in the dry season over the summer or the wet season over the winter, depending on how much you're using there. So that's an option, and it's a rate study that we'd like to take into consideration. The other benchmark that we're proposing is to install AMR/AMI metering. So automated meter reading and advanced metering infrastructure. Right now, our water meters are read by a water metering company. So you've probably seen the meter reader out there. These retrofit-capable meters, so it's not necessarily putting those advanced meters in there, but making our meters capable of putting those advanced metering systems on there when they come up for replacement. And this will allow for kind of more consistent billing cycles, supporting those tiered rates, as well as real-time data to catch leaks. So that's one of the advantages of AMI/AMR metering. So if we do this, then we're able to transition more fully into a fully advanced metering system as we begin to replace. The next enhanced measure is reusing, recycling, and non-potable water opportunities. So this is trying to look at diverting the draw of raw, potable drinking water. So one of the benchmarks that we're proposing here is to explore expanding the Durham Treatment Plant's Purple Pipeline. And that takes non-potable water. And we could, for instance, water Twalton Community Park with non-potable water instead of fresh drinking water. So that would be a great thing that we're able to do. So we'd like to explore over the next five years the possibility of expanding that pipeline to meet this benchmark.
So what we are currently looking for from council today is, does this feel like the correct approach? Is there any way you guys would like to go with this? What feels right to you guys?
And after we have our conversation, depending on what we decide and what we propose, we'll submit those proposed benchmarks to the Portland Water Bureau and begin our five-year feasibility implementation.
Any questions? Councilor Brooks?
Thank you for your work and your presentation. I don't know if this is close enough. Am I good?
Yep.
All right. Congratulations on finishing your project. And I appreciate your contribution here and your interest in helping us and the environment in general. So one of the questions that I had was, at some of the events that I've been to around education, there's also educational materials from Twalton Soil and Water Districts that are pretty hefty and informative. As well as, since we're a B-City member, there's also information from the Xerces Society and B-City. So as far as the resources, I guess part of my question is, you know, is there a way of incorporating those kinds of things as well? And ways that, I know we have some pollinator places that we put in in the parks, like integrating with demonstrations too around what drought-resistant native plants look like? And my other question is, just for teaching too, is the other place that I go with this sometimes is when we do development. If there's ways of promoting, putting in more drought-resistant landscaping in developments, whether it's residential or commercial developments. And I know in other states, they've done things like given incentives to do that, which would reduce water usage in general throughout the system. So I guess both of those questions are around collaborating throughout the organization, you know, like with some of these goals. And then the other thing I would like to say is that the Purple Pipe Expansion, I saw the presentation from Clean Water Services on that at one point. And it's very compelling. It's kind of interesting, like down the road, that we'll think that we were sprinkling water and dumping it down for, that was drinking water instead of, you know, something else, especially while there's not drinking water available. Those are my, I don't know how many of these we do, but those are the questions that come up for me around this topic right now.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you. And so these things are representative of what we were proposing to have for our benchmarks. And I do think that leaning on any partner information that we can pull from is something we're absolutely going to explore. So anything from Twalton Soil District or Xerces Society. And there's a lot of great resources, information out there. So those are definitely things that we'll pull from for our education and tabling and links on our website, things like that. Jake did a lot of work on looking at incentives and things. There are definitely pieces that we considered and looked at and would like to continue to explore, to see what we could do. But it didn't seem inside the scope of what we're able to do in the next five years.
I'm talking about the drought-resistant plant side of that. The Backyard Habitat Certification Program, which we've recently started a partnership with, is a really good way to go inside that door, start to help convert especially residential places. And I feel like eventually, if we can get enough residential people to willingly convert on their own with the support of Backyard Habitat, we could probably create a culture in our industrial side where industrial buildings and properties are going to want to put in not grass, but like drought-resistant and pretty items like that.
Thank you. Yeah. And then resources to be able to do that. I just want to also say that I want to appreciate the community really pushed for the Backyard Habitat to be out here. And that was really community-driven. So I think all the community members that did that. And I just got my certification at gold in the very beginning. I was afraid to even get it. So they have silver, gold, platinum, so I'm very proud. Anyway, thanks.
Any other questions? Councilor Sacco, I'll work my way up.
Thank you. I'm really interested in the drought prevention landscaping as well. I think that's a really neat idea. And, you know, the more we can do with that, with what we control, either at the city or I don't know, you know, how we can work with codes or builders and how we can, as we expand. So it's really interesting. Thank you for bringing that up, Councilor Brooks. So I just have sort of an education question for myself. The loss percentage, I'm just wondering exactly what that is, how that loss happens, and that we're below the threshold. But can you kind of just educate me on what that is?
Yeah. So the loss percentage includes leaking, obviously. And sometimes there's unauthorized use of water that we have to track down, things like that. So it's kind of a mix of a variety of different things that would contribute to that loss percentage.
So leaking where? Like just in different, like different places?
So all water systems tend to have a certain percentage of leaking because no pipe is perfectly sealed. And they're underground, so it's really hard to detect those kind of leaks without an extensive audit. That's typically more costly. That's why Oregon set the standard of 10%. Because if you're below that, you're not losing a huge amount of water. So you're not really going to affect your local environment or your source permits.
Okay. Thank you. 10% seems really high to me. And so that's why I was just wondering kind of where that happened. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Councilor Hillier? Thank you. First, I'd like to say congratulations on finishing your project. But also the fact that you applied for, because I'm sure that you had to interview and do a whole lot of things to get this position. And Lindsay, to you and the city and the staff that has supported this work, I've had interns before. And I know that it changes our world for the better because of what you get to feed into the next generation of learners. And we, as the kind of field supervisors, get to learn a lot and change for our community. And so I just say thank you to you and your staff for being so welcoming and doing this. I think it's an incredible way to build capacity in a variety of different ways and something I'm very passionate about. And to that vein, and I know that you cannot list all of the things that you're thinking about because it's a little tiny box, right, or rectangle. But I just wanted to put out there that we do have in the elementary schools in the area, there are gardens. And I think educating, if we can educate kids at the youngest possible age to get excited about these sorts of things, and even if it's build a bee house or, you know, a variety of different things that are happening around water conservation and how to build, you know, something, a rain barrel, or, you know, whatever it is. So the people that are running those gardens are very passionate about these things also. So hopefully, that would be another place to ensure that you have in there. And also get in classrooms and talk. Because being able to see people from the city, you never know what that could inspire in the next generation also. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Brooks?
Just bringing what Councilor Hillier brought up reminds me too of the Soil and Water District. During COVID, I was fortunate enough to have the time to watch. They have all kinds of free demonstration classes to watch about rain gardens and all these different kinds of things. And so integrating those types of things, whether it's resources at the library or having somebody that's doing that normally to come out. They're really proud of the work. And a lot of the people that are doing it are business owners and things from the community. And they do really excellent jobs. So I thought that was really interesting. A lot of it was from Portland, but there's, I mean, the Zoom. And anyway, that was one of my things. And the other thing that I'm curious about is, you know, a lot of this is focused towards residential. So commercial uses the most water, correct? So I'm just curious about where that fits in. And then another question that I'm always kind of playing with is, as we look into conservation and we're charging by rates, is there any conversation, especially since you're in school, is there any conversation about what the future of water looks like as far as how cities pay for it when we're trying to use less of it? I don't know if there's been conversations that you've had in the system. But and part of the reason why it's brought up for me is I've listened to the Native American community and their trouble with water. And part of it's because they don't feel comfortable charging for water. It's part of their worldview. And I think eventually, we might share that in a certain way. And so I'm just curious, like, how do we, you know, what does this trajectory look like if we're asking people to conserve? If we do a really good job of it, how do we pay for our systems?
I'll just jump in on that first question about industrial, commercial.
Yeah.
Something we're definitely looking at. And that'll probably be built in, I'm guessing, in like the next five-year benchmarks more specifically. We'll focus on kind of those low-hanging fruit first on the residential side.
Okay.
Would you mind repeating that second question for me?
Well, if we're going to charge by metering water and then we want less water to be utilized and we want to have better technology that we're utilizing to do these management systems, how do we pay for the future of water systems as things become tight?
One thing on that is the current wholesale contract that we're now in incentivizes us to lower our peak usage. So our highest three months of usage, if we can lower them, they get averaged over a course of five years. And when they're averaged, the hot, the peaks help to determine our next five years of water rates from Portland. So just by reducing our top three months of usage, we can lower our entire cost over the next five years for water as a city. And that can help cover that money.
Okay. That sounds, thank you very much. That's great. And then my other question too is just thinking about partnerships. I know that they have new technology that they utilize over at the steam fitters, plumbers, school. And do we have a way of partnering with them? For me, I think it's really confusing just as a homeowner or even maybe a business owner. Like, what do you look at for the new technology of sprinklers? And what should you expect for cost and installation and things like that? Because I think it's kind of random to, you know, you just call someone and you don't really know the best and those kinds of things. It just seems like we have this really great resource in town. It's just an idea. I'm not saying we should do it, but thank you.
Councilor Gonzalez?
So thank you very much. I did come late to the presentation, but I'm very familiar with these concepts. I am encouraged by this. And so thank you for bringing this forward. I am interested also in trying to see a weak development code when it comes to new development. And because we know it already, we know that we need to install smart controllers. That could be a code development. We know that we need to prevent developers from installing non-central controllers and installing the wasteful battery controllers, which are hugely inefficient, waste more water than anything else. We also could update our development code to include better planting practices. Because when you plant the wrong plant, it causes, down the road, liabilities, concerns. And it's, there is just so many things that we can do right now that doesn't require any kind of studies. Really doesn't. This is just stuff that's already out there that in practice, it's already being done in HOA communities, large HOA communities, that has to do with all this for conservation. So that is what I would be very much interested in. The water, I think, I forget which partner offers credits. It's a first-come, first-served. I know that we do not participate. But in short, you can, homeowners can get a credit depending on what type of controller they get underwater, one time, for the conversion. That already exists. They also get credits to change out the irrigation sprinkler heads that already exist. They can get credits for installing hydrometers that already, all of these already exist now that can be done. And it's just a matter of updating our codes and talking about it. These resources are already out there. We just have to bring them forth and adopt them as our rules and principles in the city. So hugely encouraged by this. But it's already out there. We should be able to probably hit the ground running on these topics. So I'm encouraged by all this. There's also new planting varieties of grass that require water. There is just so much that I feel that just needs to be updated. Now, for this topic, so when it comes to our own city, as I drive around and look at our own practices as a city, we utilize practices that cause more labor and more intensity just by utilizing different pruning practices. And we don't incorporate that now in our city. And I think that that's something that we also need to look at, is that for us to be the example. And I know that we're working through some things, but it's those things that can be done now. We don't have to wait for a huge study. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wow, that was a lot. Great job on all this work, Jake. Really appreciate it. I'll tell your dad, too. I think what Councilor Gonzalez said, this has been brought up before, especially with the plantings, like on our commercial properties. I really think there is room for code changes, so we're moving in this direction. On your five items, the one with the public education, I thought it might be really great, since we're updating the website, to really have that incorporated and easy access. the website, to really have that incorporated and easy access for people. Because, you know, right now, our website's a little difficult. But if that was something that we could easily could do, it'd be great. And then I had a question. I know in parts of California, when you were talking about the conservation-focused rate structure, part of what they do there is they, in residential homes, they look at how many people, the water usage, and there's a level based on the number of people in the home. Because like, for two people living in a home as opposed to like, a family with three or four kids, there's gonna be a lot more water usage just taking showers and everything. So, is that something you can potentially look at when you're kind of digging in the weeds of these different options?
I think you definitely can. But I would feel, I think that in the next five years, that would be slightly unfeasible for the city just from staff capacity-wise and having to get into the citizens' lives of like, how many people are living in which house. And then, creates a huge administrative burden that I don't think the city's currently prepared for. But I think in five years, that would be a good item to add on there.
So, would it be more like you'd look at what an average usage is for the average household and base it on that? Probably that'd be a little simpler. That makes a lot of sense. Well, thank you for all this work. It's really great. And I look forward to seeing a lot of these things be implemented.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. All right. Next, we have park projects update.
Good evening, Council President Pratt and councilors. I'm Rich Mueller, Parks Planning and Development Manager and Kara Heine, Project Manager, will be presenting the Parks and Trails Projects Update. Let's start with a slide you've seen before. The community recommended and voter-approved investment areas, and they include trail connections, the new river access, athletic fields, upgrades to existing parks, natural areas, and play equipment. The parks projects and investment areas align with the Council 2030 vision alignment. What we have on the right-hand side is a map showing the park and trail investments throughout the entire city, serving all the community members, employment and residential. That's on the right. On the left, these are the communications that Office Coordinator Bella is communicating, project information, project notifications, in many different methods, print, e-news, online, social postings, to get the word on all the different projects out to community members. And so, I kind of went through the overview quickly because what you really want to hear about are the project updates, and Kara's gonna provide those for you.
Hi, Council. It's been a while since I've been here, but I'm really excited to show you what Rich, Bella, and I have been working on the last six months to a year. So, we'll just start off with kind of the screenshot here of all of our completed projects. So, it includes bond projects as well as a grant project. So, as you can see, we have all the playgrounds replacements completed, along with the athletic field light upgrades, which was also bond-funded. And then, as you can see, we have the 17 acres in the Basalt Creek area that we've purchased for future parkland. And then, we have six acres right next to the Wantita Pole Center with the first three acres that we purchased at the beginning of the bond. And then, we recently acquired another three, which gives us a total of six acres for that future property. And then, at the top, the Twelton River Greenway Trail, which was funded by the grant. And I'll make sure to go over more of these in detail as the presentation goes on. So, bond-related, right now, we have the Nyberg Creek Trail Project, the athletic field improvements with the engagement happening right now. And then, the Veterans Plaza, which you're all really excited for, I'm sure, is under construction right now. And then, we're doing riverfront access planning right now, too. And then, again, we'll go over more of these as the presentation slides continue. So, first up on the dock, we have the Nyberg Creek Trail. So, this is east of I-5, and it's about a three-quarter mile-long trail, as you can see. And so, we're starting off at 65th, running across Rolling Hill Apartments right there, overlooking the Wetlands Conservancy, and then going up along Orchard Hill Condos up to Sagert Street. And so, during this early, early design, we decided to go with an eight-foot width pathway. And we also decided to go with a concrete path instead of a soft surface. One, because concrete lasts a lot longer. And then, two, just maintenance-wise for our park maintenance team, because we really like to be cognizant of that. It's just a lot less maintenance for them as well. And so, right now, we're at the stage of working with our partners, like the Wetlands Conservancy, making sure we have bumpouts, reviewing areas, along with any interpretive signage that they would like there. And then, working with the apartments and condos, we are making sure that they have, they have ways, dogway stations if they'd like, any benches overlooking the area, along with any trail connections that really add benefit to the people that live there. And so, right now, we are working on 60% design, so really just nailing down, making sure it's ADA compliant, making sure, you know, we're getting really the best design for what's best out there. And then, just a reminder that this is phase one of a phase-two trail project. So, eventually, this trail will go under I-5, connecting businesses and the community better and providing just like a safer experience for transportation and travel. So, we don't currently have funding for that second phase, but with this bond, we get it really rolling. And so, we're planning on going out to bid with this project in the spring of 2025. Our second project is the New Riverfront Park. So, again, this is near the, right next to the Wantita Pole Center. It's about six acres. And so, this image you see right now is just the conceptual design. And so, right now, I'm writing an RFP to ensure that, you know, everything that, for, you know, community engagement, construction documents, everything above is considered. And so, expect this summer 2025 to have probably at least 30 community engagement events with just a mix of in-person, online interactions, whether it's a survey, et cetera. But this is a really exciting project that will really just turn, help turn the downtown area into what we, you know, what we picture with that Urban Renewal Fund as well. And so, I think it'll be a really great catalyst, catalyst for that. And then, again, the construction for this park won't be till we sell the bonds in the second phase. And then, we have our athletic field investments. And so, right now, I'm meeting with the sport youth groups in the city of Twelton about once a month. And so, what we're doing is going over each park in the city, along with each school within the city, also with the Twelton, Tiger Twelton School District. And so, we have a ranking scale from one to four, one being the least feasible, and four being the most feasible. And so, what we've decided is we have about, you know, 10 criteria that we base each score on when we hit each site. And so, just to name a few, you know, we consider topography, whether something's in the flood plain, floodway. We consider the current parking situation, and if that site has the capacity for more in the future, if, you know, that site is feasible. We have, you know, how close is it to nearby neighborhoods? Just because if we eventually want lights, that's a consideration. What are the existing utilities? What's the existing traffic? And how would we mitigate that if we were to develop here? And additional traffic would be, would be apparent. And so, we're in the engagement phase right now, and we're going to finish that up by the end of 2024. And then, again, just with the riverfront property construction for this one and hit till the second phase sell of the bond. And then, now we have Vets Plaza. So, yay, this is exciting. But the pictures here, actually are pretty outdated, even though we just got them about maybe two, three weeks ago. So, this right photo up here is our labyrinth area. And so, as you can see, it's a circular pattern. And then, what isn't there is, we have actually charcoal pavers that look really well, that complement the space. And so, this area actually will be open for regatta. So, it'll be mostly complete with just some landscaping and stuff to add near the end. And then, on the left-hand side, we have these really nice natural basalt stones features. And so, as you can kind of see here, they're, they're actually hand-chiseling it to kind of give it more of that natural rock look. And then, they burn down just kind of the sharp edges to make sure that it's safe. Because we know, even though it's on a playground, kids will be on it, I'm sure, and people will be leaning up against it. So, that's definitely something to be taken into consideration. And then, we have this aerial view right here. So, this right here is the labyrinth area. So, this is where this circular area will be, which will be open for regatta, along with a concrete path right here, which will be complete by regatta as well. And then, so, this area, this main area is pavers, and most all the pavers are installed right now. But for regatta, we will be having fencing along this way. Coming up to the basalt stone feature, we're gonna hug it, go around this reflection pool, hug it, hug the smaller basalt stone feature, come across, and then go towards the commercial building. And then, it'll be just really compact gravel from here down to the Seneca entrance. And so, there'll be safe egress to me during that day, since I know there'll be thousands of people there for it. And so, what you don't see is, we have these really pretty white benches that are installed now in kind of this circular pattern. And then, we have synthetic turf right here in front of the small basalt stone feature, which is really nice. And then, this is the story circle area, which will be off-limits during regatta day, but it has these really cool cobblestone pavers that kind of make you think you're in Italy, kind of gives you that vibe. And then, again, the, the white benches that complement a lot of, like, the dark charcoal and the natural basalt stone. And so, everything past regatta that still needs to be complete is the landscaping. And so, we wanted to make sure with thousands of people that people weren't gonna trample them. So, which is why we decided to wait till after regatta. And then, the reflection pool in the middle here won't be operational till after regatta as well. But people will still be able to see it in the foundation of it. And then, the planters right here, the art will be installed in the spring of 2025. And then, we're hoping to have a ribbon cutting in May 2025. And I'm racing in the pumpkin regatta this year. I'll be towed from the Mario franchise, so. Next up, we have just some of the property that we've acquired. So, what you see here is the six acres that is right next to the Wantita Pole Center. So, this first rectangular is what we purchased originally. And then, the second, the second one is what we've acquired from Maggie Robb about a month or so ago. And so, we're just currently in the process of working with her and making sure, you know, she can still live there for the time being, since this won't hit construction for a while. But she's been great and definitely sees the benefit to the community by, by giving us, well, not giving us this property, but allowing us to purchase this from her. So, and then, we have the 17 acres in the Basalt Creek area. So, we have the 14 acres right across from the Autumn Sunrise subdivision and the affordable housing units. And then, there's that three acres there off of Tonkin Road that kind of makes that triangle shape as well. And so, yeah, we have those 17 acres, and then this additional six right here. And then, the bond also funded these three playground replacements. So, the bottom-left corner, a fallacy park. It's not pictured, but the main picnic shelter is covered now. So, I know that was a big want. And then, we have new blue porn place and just an updated playground. What also isn't shown here is the inclusive play feature. So, it's an electronic game with multiple game options that's accessible and for all abilities. And so, when we drive past there, I don't know if people know exactly what it is at first, but they enjoy playing with it and figuring out, you know, what all the different games they can play, which I know is new to the city, just in the sense of electronic games. And then, the middle one, we have Jergens Park, which is a forest-themed park, which is my personally, my personal favorite, just because I think the colors work really well with the current trees out there. But this forest theme was chosen by over 400 participants during the engagement phase. So, I think that's also why it's one of the best, just because of all the input for it. And then, lastly, we have Iback Park. And as you know, we have two different areas. We have kind of the pre-teen area that isn't shown here, but it has like the rock wall boulder, covered pad, covered shading for people, and kind of like a nature play benches. And then, what you have here, which isn't shown, is we have the inclusive we saw now, and then that updated blue porn place for Iback Park. But that completes the playground replacements for, funded by the bond. And then, moving away from bond projects, we, on August 1st, we actually had our ribbon cutting for this regional, this regional trail that extends the Twelton River Greenway. And so, it's, because it's regional, it's 12 feet wide, it's paved. We worked with our partners, River Ridge Apartments, and Romers Rest RV Park for this. But this is really great because it just extends that trail down there and further, you know, allows people to transport. We were out there the other day, and there were skid marks on the path. And so, part of us was like, oh no, there's black streaks. But that's what it's made for, is for people to walk and ride their bikes and create skid marks. So, that's always nice to see. But I think a few of you were at the ribbon cutting. But yeah, that was a really fun, exciting day for us to have that one, yeah, knocked off. And then, this is the utility fee project. So, one of the purpose of the utility fee is so that we can be a little bit more preventative and less reactive with, you know, all our assets in the city. And so, these three photos up top, they, this is the Kia Cuts Bridge Project. And on the far right, you kind of see this white sleeve, and it's actually fiberglass. And so, they pour concrete in it to prevent corrosion of those posts holding up the bridge. And so, this project is complete, and this is an important one, just because that's how people get into the city of Durham. That's how people get into Tigard and vice versa. So, we were able to get this project done in a fairly quick manner. And then, next we have the Parks and Recreation Facility Assessment. And so, this is about to close. And so, our team will be back in January to present on our findings regarding that. I know that's an exciting one, too, to kind of see. And then, we have the Community Park Picnic Shelter Post Replacement. And so, essentially, those, the posts holding up the largest picnic area is aging out. And so, what's great about this utility fee is that we're able to get on top of it. And so, right now, we have, we have the project on the bid website for informal quotes. And so, once we close that out and we choose a contractor, that project will be up and going and be completed hopefully by the end of 2024 as well. And then, we have the Victoria Woods Trail Stair Replacement. And so, this is replacing the staircase with concrete steps and powder-coated railings with, I think, about five landings to make sure we're compliant as possible. And so, we're wanting to get this out to bid for construction by the end of 2024 as well. And then, last but not least, we have the Little Wood Rose Trail Renovation. And so, this is off of Boone's Ferry. And so, the idea there is we want to create more of a designated parking lot with ADA parking, as well as replacing all the gravel there and making sure it's ADA-accessible a little bit further through the trail. Because right now, it doesn't go very far. And so, this will just, will make sure that the slopes are taken care of, and certain tree branches and roots are taken care of for that, too. And then, the staircase on the opposite side of that will be replaced as well. And then, next, we have our ARPA-funded projects. So, we have Las Casitas, formerly known as Stone Ridge, which is in 90% design right now. So, it's really close to being ready to put out to bid for construction. But as you can see, this had a lot of engagement as well. So, we have the splash pad there, and the community got to choose not only the name of the park, but the colors of the splash pad. What isn't pictured is, we have half a basketball court, but that's really unique. And then, we have, you know, all those play structures over there that would really be beneficial to that area. And especially with rolling hills, you know, they get a new trail below, and then they get a new playground at top. So, that's really exciting for that area. And so, we are wanting to get this out to bid by the end of 2024 for construction. And then, the Basalt Creek Flagpole Lot, which is in the Basalt Creek area, right across the street from the 14 acres we purchased. And then, again, still next to the Autumn Sunrise in the SEPA area, we have this we have this kind of linear park with like this eight-foot trail that we're planning on putting there. But as you can see, it's a pretty simplistic park, which, which was done on purpose because we don't have a whole lot of people living in that area. And we want to make sure that we're empowering those people who eventually are there and that they get a say in the features that they want. And so this is why, you know, you only see some trees and a path and some grass. But this project will go out to bid in spring of 2025. And that is it. You probably have a lot of questions.
Any questions? Councilor Brooks?
Thank you for the, it was a great presentation. Thank you so much. It's really exciting what what is happening and what you're doing. And I love that, I love the comprehensive nature of this and how we've been able to not only raise dollars, but invest in Parks Lands, which is an asset that it also improves our city so much, not just financially, but livability-wise and and green space-wise. So it's just so exciting. My feedback also is that I was just at a event and they were talking, somebody was talking about possibly opening a business here. And they were talking about all the stuff with the Parks Bond and everything else. So like, the word is out there, that's people that don't even live in our city. And it's just really impressive and people are talking well beyond our community about it. My question, I had two questions about Las Casitas. I was just out there for a little party. And my first question is, they have a hook on a tree for the pinata parties. And I'm curious if we could have a formalized thing so that people don't need to get out a big giant ladder and risk themselves, especially in, and a place that's grassy, so that the kids are not scrambling in dirt and hard things. So I don't know if there's a grassy place where we could actually somehow put a pole or we could figure out, maybe we could get a sponsor, a business that would want to sponsor, just something to think about how we could integrate that. And my other question was around signage for that park. And I'm curious, I just wonder if a community-involved signage process might be kind of neat for that park. And I'm just curious if we, you know, if we already have that bid or what the plan is for, because it's a new-named park, what the plan is for the the sign for the park or if we have one yet.
Do you want to answer that one?
Certainly. Thank you for those questions. We hadn't thought of a pinata pole or something, but I'm sure in the future that can be integrated and we can, we can put some thought into that. We're working on signage right now and it'll be a gateway sign, but the design isn't completed at this point in time. So more to follow on that. Perhaps community engagement will go from there.
Yeah, I just think even community design might be neat. I'm, I'm just curious about that. And I'm, I'm just, I was out at this thing. There were several different items to talk about, but one of the things that people were the most excited about were the projections of what this park looks like. They want to know when and they want to, you know, they want all kinds of information. They're super excited about it. So I'm just looking forward to keeping it going and maybe even just getting something that we could put out there with dates and future pictures, like one of those banner things that could just be out there so people could look at it all the time. I feel like I had one more for this, but I can't think of it. So I appreciate all the work. There'll be more time to talk about everything.
Yeah, thank you. And and we do have in process a banner that's going on that wood fence.
Yeah.
And it will show the features of the park and Bella's working on that at this time.
So exciting. Thank you. Councilor Sacco?
Thank you. And thank you for all the work. It's so exciting to see these projects come to life. So my first question is probably too late for this, if this isn't already in the works. But it's always surprising to me when I talk to folks about the Pumpkin Regatta and how they, they had no idea that that the lake is back there. So I'm wondering if we have any plans to put signs up where the Veterans Plaza is for all the folks that are coming to Pumpkin Regatta to say this is the future site of our Veterans Plaza. And I know it's like next weekend, but it might be a cool thing to sort of invite people back to the area, knowing that the space isn't complete yet and there's more exciting things to come.
So Bella, Julie and Heidi actually have a really great plan for that. We decided to put like really tall skeletons out there with arrows pointing like entrance or like skeletons with a hard hat or signage that says, pardon our dust. You know, we're not fully complete. Come back next year to see it, you know, 100% done. But those three have done a really good job of making sure that this is going to be a really fun space still. And it's just really great to see, you know, us all working together and making sure that, you know, your concerns, you know, we've already taken care of and thought of.
Love it. Thank you. And just another quick question. So I noticed that the the statue of the dog with the ice cream and the girl is no longer in that area. Are we repurposing that somewhere? It's one of my favorite statues.
Yes, right now it's that, it's somewhere around here with our Parks Maintenance Team. And so, yeah, where our intention is to repurpose it somewhere when we find the perfect place for it.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Councilor Gonzalez?
So thank you very much. This is very exciting. It's definitely a very good example of your city working for its people. There's a lot here. I'm wondering if we're going to be sharing this with the CIOs, because this is in itself just its own presentation. I mean, I'd be happy just to walk around and make me look really good, just going out and talking about this. This is just great. I mean, very exciting. And you did a wonderful job sharing all this information with us. I think you covered questions that we could have already asked and you've already covered them. I just don't know. It's just very exciting. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And if Megan behind me wants us at the CIO meetings, then we'll definitely, you know, help out there.
Any other questions? Oh, did you want to say something, Ross?
I just, I just wanted to, excuse me. Hi, I'm Ross Hoover, Parks Recreation Director. So the, the number of projects that you saw here are just a small fraction of the, the work that our department has taken on. And I just wanted to highlight Rich and Kira's work to make these happen. They are a tremendous team that works really hard. And so I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank, the whole Parks Department, I mean, our Parks and Libraries, we, we can brag about them all the time. So thank you for all of your hard work. It's very exciting to see all this coming to fruition. And my question for you, and I know I've been told this, but I know we're going to get asked this weekend, is when will the Veterans Plaza be complete, complete with the sculptures and everything?
I think sometime, I think sometime in May.
Okay.
With our ribbon cutting.
So if we say by next summer, we're good.
Yeah, next summer, summer 2025.
There you go. Thank you so much. Oh.
And you have some competition for the Pumpkin Regatta up here, just so you know.
Are you racing, too?
You will probably look cuter than us.
We'll see you there.
Thank you.
All right, Don, opioid settlement. And the chief. Where's Boone?
Currently he's at home.
So good evening, Council President Pratt and councilors. My name's Don Hudson. I'm the Assistant City Manager and Finance Director. And I'm here with Chief Greg Pickering. And we want to give you an update on our opioid settlement money. And so we're going to break this into three parts. First, I will give you an update on the funds that we've received and the projected funding stream. I'll then turn it over to Chief Pickering to talk about the strategies and the uses that are allowed under the settlements. And then I'll come back at the end and talk about the recommendations for the funding that we're receiving. So to date, there are eight ongoing main settlements. And then we've received monies on two additional ones. The McKenzie one is a new one that we've received a payment on, but I have no updates on how long that will be, what the funding stream is that is forthcoming. The other ones you see on there are all payments that we're going to be receiving starting now through 2029, all the way to 2038. There are eight of those. And the Walmart settlement, they decided to accelerate their payments. So we've received all that money, even though the settlement was for an ongoing amount. And you can see that we have received just about over $156,000 to date of settlement monies. And the funding stream over this goes out to 2038. And we're anticipating receiving another $350,000. The couple other settlements that we've, the McKenzie is a piece that I don't know how much more we'll get. And there's another one that we received that is in bankruptcy, that we received a payment. But because it's under, in bankruptcy, I talked to the state and they don't know when, when we receive, if we will receive any more. But the ones we know, here's the amounts that we anticipate. And you'll see that because the amounts are going to go down, the Allergen one finishes in 2029, Jansen in 2030, and then it's kind of sporadic. And so that last year is just the distributor settlement monies. Now I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Chief Pickering and he'll kind of talk about our strat, the strategies and approved uses.
So through the settlement, there were some pretty specific guidelines on what these dollars could be spent on. So the core strategies that were set forth through the settlement, as you can see here, is a somewhat extensive list, but primarily they have to do with the treatment and prevention of opioid-related incidents. Things as, as far as naloxone and other FDA-approved drugs, medication, assisted treatment, prevention programs, expansion of warm handoff programs, recovery services, research and development through effective strategies for abatement and so on. So the, the core strategies themselves are really broken up into three tenants. The first one being treatment. So this is really to look at treating those who are affected with opioid use disorder. Support of people who are currently in treatment, as well as connecting people to treatment that they may need. Working to address the needs of criminal justice-involved persons, so those that are in custody or involved in the criminal justice system. And addressing the needs of pregnant and parenting women and their families, including babies with neonatal abstinence syndrome. So these are babies who are, have been born addicted to opioids or other controlled substances. Part two of the, of the core strategies is prevention and the prevention side. This is again to really, to start with the over-prescribing of opioids through our medical system, working to prevent the misuse of opioids and the prevention of overdose deaths and other harm reductions. So the third part of the strategies is really one that kind of focuses more towards the local level. So the first responders, providing education to law enforcement and other first responders for appropriate practices and precautions when responding and dealing with opioids. The prevention of, also, excuse me, the provisions to allow for wellness and supportive services for first responders who respond to opioid emergencies and dealing with that. There's money set aside for leadership and planning and coordination to work through training, the abatement side of the epidemic, and again, programs and strategies to work to try to stem the issues. Training through, not only through law enforcement and first responders, but for the community and for our, for around. And then again, the research side to see how we can try to stem the problem.
So our potential uses for our settlement funds, our recommendation at this point is to continue to accrue the funds and then we will highlight proposed uses during our annual budget process. The main reasons for this recommendation at this time is there's still a lot of unknowns regionally. There's a lot of things that are happening, a lot of programs that are being talked about. So we just, things aren't fully baked in a lot of ways there. We're still developing potential programs here locally in Tuolton. And so as we work through those, we'd like to have the time to work through that and accrue the funds at that point. And there are start, there are a lot of moving parts to this whole situation and these settlement monies. We just don't know enough about all of them to take a recommendation of this is what we think we should be putting our money towards on an ongoing basis. We have thought about some programs, some potential programs within Tuolton, kind of participating in helping to create a warm handoff deflection program. There are some of these on the, kind of on the west side, but there's really no, nothing happening here on this part of the county. And so looking at that as a potential in the future. Purchasing things like Narcan or other items for our first responders, including our police department as well as our library, because they are kind of a first responder to some of these situations. Partnering with Washington County and other entities. We know that some, you know, other cities are involved in receiving settlement funds and they're kind of in the same situation we are, trying to determine what are the best uses for this. So continuing to have the discussions at the county level, as well as with the other cities, and determining a strategy for maybe being able to group together and creating programs. The other piece is outside agency grants. So we have the outside agency program that you just completed. So we have an infrastructure in place for this type of a potential use. What this would allow is for organizations, applying organization would be asked, again, this is kind of in the stages of working through, but having them to be able to identify specific project-related outcomes that they hope to achieve that directly relate to the goal of the settlement funds. The use of funds could be something that would likely to be in the abatement strategies that will end, reduce or lessen the impact of opioids and substance use on the communities that meet those priority areas. We would set up potentially priorities for funding. What it would look like is something like community-based organizations located in Tuolton or servicing our residents. And so it could be something such as the process you have now for your other outside agencies. You have a place in there that these agencies could identify that they meet these strategies and the use of these funds, and then we would bring that to the council for approval. So it is something, because we have that infrastructure in place, that we're starting to look a little bit more of whether that's something we could use settlement monies for in the, kind of sooner rather than later in the use of settlement funds. And that's something we would come back to you with more information. At that, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilor Brooks?
Thank you for the presentation and just a well-thought-out response. I had a couple of things that came up for me as I'm, as I'm listening. And one is to remind people to that if, if people don't get enough pain medication when they go in for surgery or get treatment, it can cause phantom pain for the rest of their lives. So listening to doctors very specifically about this issue is really, really important. I know even just anybody that's prescribing opioids now is tracked. And that was happening even a long time ago when I was practicing. So from those provider points, there's a lot of oversight going on. I'm very interested in a couple of things. We have a lot of different treatments now that we used to not have, especially for opioids. So and then we also have that dearth of, of services in this area. So we, I just went to one of the presentations around the OHSU legacy combination that's happening. And Legacy talks about they're going to be doing, their money is going to go into the largest medical foundation that we have in the history of our state. And it's going to be focused on community and people, you know, like DEI and different things like that. So, so I'm just curious about what the future of, of services here looks like, if it's going to change at all at our hospital as that organization changes. Is there, I know that you're working with this social worker in the ride-along. Is there room in there for enhanced services? And then more direct treatment options or even liaisons in our community so that people can get to where they need to go? I think secondary trauma is a really I think secondary trauma is a really big issue. I understand that one really well. And I know that we talk about prevention here and all kinds of things. I feel more hopeful about treatment around opioid addiction than I had in the past. So I just think there's opportunities there. So I just encourage that when we're looking at our services. Thanks.
Any other questions? Oh, Counselor Reyes.
Thank you for the presentation. I've grown up in seeing this my entire life. People were dosing or people that sell drugs and all that. I, I see how harmful this can be. And having first responders, people around us that can help us, including kids that weren't like addicted or helping us cope with the lifestyle, like going to, like camps in the summer. So we were away from this whole situation, right, for at least seven days. That was very helpful to be growing up. On your project, on your potential programs within Tuolatin, I'm also concerned about those people that see this on a daily basis, like your officers and your staff. Is there a way we can put some, and I don't know if this is even, I know you said these funds were designated or were allocated for specific, specific things. But I feel like having, taking care of your own is also important because it may, it may not be financially, but maybe like go have a steak with your, you know, go, go have some dinner with your wife and your kids. So that way they're not, that helps with the, I don't know, I just feel like for us, growing up in, being on the other side, not like the, but being traumatized, seeing all this, helping us go to camp was very important or doing activities outside our neighborhood was really helpful. So I just wonder if you're, if there are any funds or was there anything in, within these awarded grants or settlements that is to help your, your, your officers or to, you know, have some activity out in, you know, camping or, you know, send, you know, they can go with their families and just away from the madness sometimes that happens. And I know it's not, mine was pretty extreme, but I know that there are situations we've had on last year when there was a dead, someone that was passed away in one of the apartments at Nyberg. So I mean, coming into that, seeing that, I would think it would be traumatizing. So I'm just wondering if there are any funds allocated for support for first responders?
The settlements do allow for that at this point. We don't have any plan in place for that, but we can use the settlement dollars for the support of the secondary trauma that first responders deal with.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Thank you for the information. My question is around the sustainability, knowing that these funds will eventually sunset. And as you look, and I know that you had mentioned there's, we don't, we don't have all, we don't have all the moving parts yet. We're still working through that. But say after it gets all figured out, and you, the types of plans within Tuolatin that you would want to create would be something completely new. Would we want to enlist, would we want to support or bolster an existing organization knowing that this is just an infusion into their already successful plan? And there's never enough, and I understand that. But I worry always of developing something new in Tuolatin and then not having resources after these funds sunset. How would we approach that?
We think that would be part of any analysis we do for any program we set up. It's because you're right, we don't want to set something up that's going to have, the money's going to go away and we're not going to have any way to fund. So whatever we're looking to, to create or set up or partner with, that would be part of the analysis of what would happen down the road.
Thank you.
Counselor Hillier?
Thank you. This is something that I've studied inside and out, and so I'll make my questions very brief because I, I would like to know what data you've collected already around what's happening in our service area. Around the use of Narcan, around like?
Oh, we, well, we track all of our uses of Narcan and all of our CPR calls that do involve Narcan. I don't have that data with me. I can definitely pull that up and have that available for you. I do know that Narcan deployments throughout the county are high. They're, Narcan is used very frequently throughout our, even in our city. So I know there was at least one, if not two, deployments last week. So it is something that is, that is readily used.
Yes, thank you. And so that is data that will be used to help. Don, you mentioned that you already have some programs that you're looking at. Could you speak to that? And are you using the data from both TBFNR and what the chief has and what other maybe bystanders are using to inform that?
Well, we have just started the conversations just because there's so much unknown. So we haven't gotten to the depth of doing that analysis, but absolutely that's the kind of information we would be looking at to create any programs. And those are the dialogues that are happening countywide. I haven't been involved in those conversations yet, but I know they're happening.
So I really will be honest with you. I believe that this needs a regional approach, and I think that's what I'm hearing you both say. And so I would really like to encourage us to consider using some of our funds and getting maybe some other agencies to go in with us or counties, municipalities, whatever, and hire a facilitator to help coordinate a plan. Because I think isolated in our community, we're not going to be able to do as, have as big of an impact maybe as we would like. I mean, I love all the things that you've put out and I've read Schedulley, I've, I mean, I know Schedulley. And I also know that if we can have somebody come in from the outside looking in that would be quick, knows what's going on, there are some best practices that have already been set up in other states I think we could quickly learn from. We could bring key stakeholders. I think if the chief were to invite people, people would show up that are key stakeholders from hospitals and all the different things. And I would really love to see us do something and take the lead because I think we have amazing leaders in our community that could take the lead on that and do something meaningful with it. And then it could potentially address sustainability and some of the other things that we're looking at because maybe all of a sudden programs are absorbed depending on what they look like. And I will say that I think the program has to have mental health supports for what our officers and first responders are seeing. And I also think it needs to have an education component that empowers our community to become Narcan-trained, to understand what an overdose looks like, and to understand the laws around the good citizen, good Samaritan, excuse me, laws. I think the more we can educate and get the right call at the right time. I know I happened to see a call that was a crash call and it really was an overdose call. And I think setting our first responders up for success by helping educate the community could, could also. And I will also say that as important as treatment is, I will never underestimate the importance of treatment and recovery ever. However, people have to want to go into treatment. And so I think we have to also recognize that as part of this program. Thanks.
I want to ask a little more about the warm handoff deflection program and what, could you explain what that means a little more?
Yeah, so currently with the beginning of deflection, so the deflection program, of course, when, when the use of controlled substances or the possession of controlled substances was recriminalized on September 1st, there is a program that is currently being tested through the Health and Human Services Department in Washington County, which they call a warm handoff. So if an officer were to encounter someone who is in possession of a controlled substance and would fall under the deflection protocols, one of the first things they do is they call, what they call a peer counselor or peer supporter. So it is somebody typically in recovery who will respond to the scene and take over once the officer issues the citation, and then would hand them off to this person who would help them get and navigate through the deflection process and potentially into treatment. The unfortunate side is right now those services and those peer navigators or peer supporters are only available in the Hillsborough area. We don't have any out here. We, as the local chiefs, Tiger, Sherwood, King City, have pushed back and said, hey, we need these services out here. And they said, there's just not the funding to do that. So this would be a program that we would potentially like to look at in the future as something that maybe we could use these opiate settlement dollars to help get ourselves into that same pool, but more towards this area of the region.
Okay, and that's, that's the area I'm going to put, you know, we've had discussions, but, and I think partnering with the county is probably the answer, but I mean, we're just the little lost east part of Washington County and it's, and it's not reasonable to think someone in that kind of situation, you're going to put them on a bus for two-plus hours and two-plus transfers and expect them to get to a treatment center. So I think that's a really important part of this picture.
Yeah, I think we've seen that in the future. You know, we have the Hawthorne Walk-In Center and facilities that are in Hillsborough. And for someone to voluntarily check themselves into the mental health, they have to take two buses and/or max to get there, and they don't make it.
Right.
And so, which then requires typically an officer to take them or to find an Uber or a taxi, but again-
And do we have officers with the time to take them?
We make the time in that situation. If we have somebody who wants to go, we'll make the time to go. And that's, so that's, that's where we backfill here in this end of the county, is that the officers are the ones who are becoming the transport service. They're, they're making sure that these people are getting the help that they need.
Well, that's wonderful, but I think there's got to be a better solution there.
Correct.
All right. Any other questions?
So I'd like to know if we want to consider moving forward with a consultant potential or, I mean, you can look at 20,000 bucks out of this or something. I think you've come to us asking for recommendation, and I really feel like that should be considered.
Like, just to kind of look at potential solutions?
Yeah, to hire a consultant that is kind of an expert in this and would help us navigate it and do something because I cannot emphasize enough, we have got to have services over here. It's ridiculous for us to spend our dollars on officers doing the right thing every time. And we are seeing more and more off the max line, off I-5, off, you know, all the things that are going on. We are being impacted way more in our community. So I think, that's just my feel.
Counselor Reyes?
Yeah, I agree too. I just, but I don't want to put a number to it until I hear what other, like an amount to it.
Well, I think Chief, if I could have this discussion, I think it's something we can definitely look into, and I think those are the conversations to have with our neighboring cities because I think you had mentioned earlier, Counselor Hillier, about having some kind of facilitator that would work with all of us to come up with a plan. So that may be, that's something we can look into and see what that would look like. And I know in our conversations with other cities, see if, what kind of partnerships we could get.
I have several experts across the nation that would zoom in and do a great job. So if I can be of any assistance or that I can connect you with someone with Washington County potentially, please let me know.
Okay, we'll take that back.
All right. Counselor Gonzalez?
If I heard you correctly, that our neighboring cities would potentially partner with us, whether us with them or vice versa, and hence why you're looking potentially to find something close to us, I would yield to Counselor Hillier. I think that you've done a lot of work around this. So I, a lot of us in council have different expertise. You asked me about landscaping, HADUs, I'm, I can tell you by a heartbeat and here in counseling, and we've all done a lot of the work around this kind of stuff that, you're right, it could probably advance hugely, these dollars. So I would support Cindy Hillier on bringing in a counselor for that wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Counselor Brooks?
I agree as well. I think there's a whole piece around healthcare that there's an expertise that we don't really engage with too much as a city. There's also so many services and boards to navigate that sometimes even people in the government don't know all the government boards that are working on this stuff. There's definitely best practices and if we have measurables, we do much better. And I, I just think, and then you have a foundation for a regional approach, and it could be something that could be sort of a footprint that would show what the needs are for a needs analysis that's kind of built in as sort of a pilot program that the county can learn from, that metro can learn from, that the region can learn from. Because, I mean, I've said it 500 million times, we don't have behavioral health infrastructure here. And I think education and best practices as well, and looking at ways that, to make it easier for someone like me to teach somebody, you know, just all the things, including, and we have great resources for, you know, law enforcement and budgeting, but we need, we need the whole shebang. Thanks.
And I can mention that there is a statewide collaborative group that meets every couple of weeks, I believe, both Chief Picker and I get the emails about that and the agendas. And I know I kind of keep an eye to see if there's something, they do talk a lot about the rural areas, but it is something that both of us do receive information on and we can go back and get copies of presentations and so forth. So that is another avenue for us to get ideas and what's out there.
Okay, well, it looks like you have some marching orders.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next we have the council, the meeting agenda review. We have, I believe Dale Potts, who are one of our veterans, is going to do the pledge tonight, which is great. And then we have two proclamations. I'm assuming Counselor Hillier will do Red Werben Week. And then we have a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Would anyone like to do that? Counselor Sacco? Okay. I think we're good. We'll do some roundtable communications, starting with Counselor Sacco.
Thank you. So on the 8th, I attended the Willamette River Water Coalition. We reviewed the status of the new water treatment plants in Sherwood that's down to Walton Sherwood Road and 124th. They are doing tours if anybody's interested. I think I will go eventually, so I'll let you guys know if anybody wants to come along. We also reviewed updates on the Willamette Water reallocation and then finally reviewed water drought reports. And we're at average, a little bit below in some of the reservoirs due to our dry September that we've been having. And that's it.
Counselor Hillier?
Thank you. So on September 27th, I had the opportunity to attend the TBFNR Community Academy. And it was pretty awesome. I did only have one recommendation. They start timing us when we drive the fire trucks so that there could be a race because I'm a little competitive. So, no, it was pretty amazing. We had, we, I may or may not have done that. So it was, it was pretty amazing. And I am so inspired by the diversity that was there represented, the fire department was representing. And those women are badasses. That's all I'm going to say. Like, I want to grow up and be one of them. But I did, we went on five calls that night, and our very first call was an opioid overdose. And I watched someone dead come alive, back to life with the two officers and the TBFNR people there. And that's why I'm extra passionate about how we make sure we take care of our, our first responders. And then on October 2nd, we had Architectural Review Board. We hadn't met since last December, so it was nice to get back together. Thank you to the Volunteer Council that helps give us new members. We appreciate that. We have a rockin' group. And we'll be meeting a few times to make sure that we really understand all the rules and things that we need to know for the future decisions we make.
Counselor Reyes?
No official meetings this last two weeks, but I will be, the core meeting tomorrow, the core committee, I will meet tomorrow at noon, so don't forget if you're a part of that. Thank you.
Counselor Gonzalez?
I didn't attend any official meetings. A lot, Washington County, the, the Washington County Corning Community, just a lot happening there right now. I really couldn't quite extrapolate to give you one thing that I can say this is what we're doing, but a lot of really good updates, so that's all I have.
Counselor Brooks?
I did a lot. So I'm just going to run through because I have to do it this way today. The first thing I'll say is I went to a Zoom meeting that I think I forwarded information on about how municipalities can benefit from hiring a professional grant writer. That was on the 26th. Interesting thing about that, that it was focused on climate, but there are funding opportunities for things that people wouldn't think there was, like law enforcement and the police department and different types of things that are included in that grant package. And one of the things about that is considering with capacity building, if we don't have staff or if we need support, that there's ways that these grant writing organizations can do assessments, help for a fee and take it all the way from writing it through audits. They'll be giving the grant through the audit will be the next one that I'll be attending, which is following up after that. We all attended the Barriers and Solutions to Housing, the Housing Forum. I would just- I just wouldn't want to miss talking about that. We see that there are a lot of people struggling in our region for actual services and case management to help them connect with the services that are available and some services that are not fully functioning. So I did bring it up at the PAB meeting and discussed, we know that prevention is the most cost-effective thing to do around our housing crisis and fully funding, what does it take to fully fund that line? And what are we missing so that when we have the conversation with Metro around service cuts, if those service cuts aren't, if we don't even fully serve with what we have now, do we want to do that? What is it? So those are the questions I'm asking myself. I also went on October 3rd to the briefing on the OHSU legacy filing, which is what I discussed earlier tonight. The important information around that to me is that they really talked about increasing outreach and education and what the, what the collaboration would look like. It was a very high-level conversation and in some ways vague, but there will be a huge foundation from the legacy side for community health care. I did ask about behavioral health, and they pointed to one program that they're engaged with right now, but it didn't seem to be a big focus. However, it was really not about that. It was about what the picture's going to look like. And we have nursing shortages, we have shortages all the way through our health care system. So they did talk about those things. We, I went to the Regional Water Providers Consortium Board Meeting. I just want to applaud our Public Works Director, Rachel Sykes, for her presentation on our new fancy valve that makes electricity. And there were four cities that presented. This was one of the first times we had local cities present. We, a lot of times we'll have federal leads, pretty impressive people. And these people were pretty impressive. I think that it was one of the most interesting meetings that we've had, and that was all about new technology, especially around water, energy, conservation, et cetera, and what different municipalities are doing right now. And I heard after the meeting that our presentation and questions in particular were very good. So just have to say. And then we, I also did the PAB meeting. I have to look at, oh, yeah. On Thursday, October 15th, we went through, we have some new language for the grant applications and the questions that are being asked and some ways that we want to be more efficient around awarding grants. So there's going to be some flexibility in use and time added. And there's probably going to be, again, less money from HUD this year for housing. And then, you know, my thing is, we look at this housing crisis and as local advocates, you know, wonder why do these funds diminish when the need is going up? So just how do we capture our federal funds and put it in the direction that we need when facing this crisis is my question. And I also want to say, I want to thank Metro Counselor Rosenthal for inviting me to the Toewalton River Keepers Green Hair Awards Benefit. The Xerces Society was there. It was at an alpaca farm. It was really cool. The Xerces Society was there, Toewalton Soil and Water was there. I got tons of information, books like this that they give out. They're willing to do programs. Xerces is willing to talk about programs and bees and whatever else here anytime. There, there was just a lot of engagement. And the other thing is I sat by the person in charge of plants for Metro, and they are not far away, so I'm probably going to go visit, and was encouraging some other things I can talk about later. Anyway, that's all I got. Thanks.
Well, first I wanted to mention that several of us went to the Greater Portland Inc. Summit where the topic was sports as an economic driver, and since we're kind of landlocked, we kind of joked that maybe pickleball was our sport here.
What about the Blazers?
Yeah, no, I meant in Toewaltin. But it was an interesting discussion. And I went to the Joint Transportation Committee, or Joint Committee on Transportation Round Table, which was quite interesting. And the topics that were really focused on, and this was in Happy Valley on that Thursday, was transparency and equitable and efficient funding. And there was a lot of public transportation. There was actually, at the nighttime event, there was a father and daughter that came all the way from Tigard on their e-bike because, and they pointed out that it was faster than public transportation. And then the next day, I know that Mayor Bubanik was at the roundtable and that Mike McCarthy spoke for us, so thank you very much. I had the C4 meeting last week, and we, of course, did a recap on what happened at the Joint Committee on Transportation events. And then we had a very interesting, especially after our housing meeting discussion, because Clackamas County is actually doing a pretty good job, and they have one in their entry system, they were nationally recognized. And I heard such a different, it was just so different than what we heard from Washington County. And they really work hard to keep these people in housing once they're in there and work, you know, they know when this thing will run out, and they work really hard. They've done a really good job over there. There was mention, though, that with the idea that Metro's looking out of moving, you know, with this new extension that they're looking at, that they don't really need the housing, they have that, and they really need the funds to help people. So that's their big concern in Clackamas County. Went to the Region One Act meeting, and we talked about the State Transportation Investment Fund, or the STIF funds that you hear about. These are, just in our region, which there are six in the state, there are $22 million worth of ask, and there's only $25 million for the whole state, so. But our group just basically said, all these are great projects, we don't have one we don't like. And also, I wanted to mention that some of the small transit providers are really adamant that these funds for the actual public transportation, 74% of it routes through TriMet, and, well, no, it's 74% runs through the four biggest, or transportation providers. 92% of what comes into the metro region runs through TriMet, and they allocate it down to these other providers. So they have some really concerns how this is allocated to them. Let's see, the Community Advisory Committee on Transportation, for our transportation plan update, we had our final meeting, and it was mostly a, you know, great job. And I, what I was most impressed with was that the group of community members participated so thoroughly, and we got a lot of different perspectives and input that I think will make it a great plan. And then lastly, I went to this Martinelli Woods CIO meeting, and I did talk about the park stuff, so. So we will be adjourned until 7 o'clock.